Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for September 21st, 2020. Call upon Councilmember Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I first like to recognize this gentleman who just walked in, the Boy Scout. Sir, if you could come to the podium and introduce yourself, tell us maybe what merit badges you're working on or what rank you are?
I'm Walter Groundsel.
Actually, if you want, you can take your mask off so we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm Walter Groundsel. I'm working towards Star Scout, and I'm here to perform the Pledge of Allegiance for citizenship in the community.
Awesome. So what we'll do is I'll ask for a moment of silence, and then we'll stand, and if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
All right. So if everyone would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the country for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Miller. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
All are present. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Dot Miller for this evening.
Motion's to excuse, not excuse, accused, not to accuse. I'm going to accuse her of being at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame instead of with us tonight. So all votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Thank you. Next, we have, we do not have any minutes. We need to approve. We have no recognitions tonight. We have no presentations tonight. So we'll move on to public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda. And the first one we have is Tapani Minapa. Yes, sir. If you'd come up to the podium.
Thank you. I'm Tapni Minapa, Arvada resident, and here to talk about, a few words about Republic Services, their level of service and price increases. Once this council here approved consolidation of services, Republic Services, I was reasonably satisfied with it because I had no issues with Republic Services. Shortly afterward, however, seemed like they probably thought that they had, it's over the proverbial trash barrel, because I got a notice that my services were going to be decreased or I had to pay extra money for it. And then shortly after that, my level of my services was, the price was increased, either six or 12 percent, depending upon how I did the calculation. It seems to me that Republic Services gave a deal to the council, at least, and the council itself decided to take the deal, and there were, at least four of the members bought a pig and a polk there. Because once they, services were discontinu, once they were in a driver's seat, they felt that they did not have to conform with what was happening in the fair market. I'm proposing that previously, things were reasonably good. We could change services if we were dissatisfied and/or go for a better price or something like that. Now, all of a sudden, that option has been taken away. So I propose that the council rethink its position and allow the marketplace to take place and let the citizens of Arvada choose what services they want, based on what Republic Services has already shown in this instance to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I've got Daniel Mondregan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
Good to see you all. I am glad to be, have the opportunity to be here before you for a few minutes, just to say, first of all, thank you so much for the upcoming meetings that are going to take place, the community conversations around inclusiveness in Arvada. It will be a good opportunity for the conversation to continue to look for the opportunities for us to create a more inclusive, more welcoming, and ensuring that racial justice issues are, have a way to be able to be dealt with, to be viewed at and to be dealt with. The conversations will be a wonderful step in the movement towards the creation of a task force, you know, as a commission, that can continue the work that our community needs. I have loved being a part of Arvada since 1978 and look forward to it continuing to be a wonderful place to live and intend to help make that happen. Been reading a wonderful book recently by author Virginia Sanchez, Please and Petitions. The book highlights the beginnings of the state of Colorado, the formation of the territory, and then the state. And unfortunately, it details the missed opportunities to fully bring together all citizens of the state. And in fact, from the very composition of the physical nature of the state, the people in the southern part of the state were not given the opportunity to voice their opinion if they could, should be a part of the state of Colorado, or if they should have stayed as relationships dictated with New Mexico. It was referred to as the notch, Costilla County, Conejos County, Los Anamos County there. If the 7,000 Hispanics in those counties would have been listened to, chances are Colorado would have looked a little different. But they were not asked here in Colorado or back east. And then, when the first legislature was seated, there were two Hispanic legislators from the southern part of the state who were elected. They were not fully informed, or it's not really clear, I should be fair and say, it's not really clear why they showed up five days after the beginning of the legislature. Was it travel? Was it not being informed? There were problems from the beginning. And then when they arrived, there were no means for them to understand English. Systemic racism, not inability to honor the diversity from the very beginning of our state. We know the abuse that can happen because of prejudice and racism. We forget about the neglect that can happen. So to have the means for all citizens to have a voice together and work together is going to be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And do we have anybody else signed up for public comment during this portion?
Yes, there's one person on Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, do via Zoom. Here's Nancy Young.
Very good.
Nancy, go ahead and unmute and speak.
Good evening, Ms. Young.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We certainly can.
Okay. Good evening. Arvada for all the people has heard talk that Old Town residences, also known as the $30 land deal, might be approved administratively, with no opportunity for the public to comment on this highly controversial project. To refresh your memory, this six-story, high-density, luxury rental apartment building adjacent to historic Old Town, Arvada, was denied by council amid overwhelming public opposition in 2018. A few weeks later, the proposal was heard again and approved. The courts determined, deemed the approval unlawful because the city did not follow the proper process to rehear. A new application is expected for essentially the same luxury rental building. Since the project is 100% residential in a mixed-use zone, it should be required to obtain a conditional use permit, including public review and approval by both Planning Commission and Council. It is said that because a few units, less than 10 of about 250 apartments, might be designated live-work units, those units would provide the required retail commercial component to qualify for administrative approval. Please note, live-work units are residential 100% of the time. The occupants always living there, and they only work there part-time. If this rumor is true, and Old Town residences is approved administratively, it raises serious concerns about transparency in government and whether the city council is shirking its responsibility to the citizens. Every Arvada citizen needs to pay close attention. Your neighborhood could be next to see a massive inappropriate building like this without notice or public input. I urge you, our elected officials, to assure that any new application for Old Town residences be subject to the full light of the public process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else that's signed up for public comment? Very good. We'll move on. We have three items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing a change order to the first renewed and amended agreement between Arvada and Triple M Construction for the 2019 and 2020 concrete replacement projects in an amount not to exceed $1.2 million. Second one is a resolution authorizing and ratifying execution of an easement agreement concerning certain real property located within Memorial Park along 59th Avenue to Old Wadsworth Boulevard. Third one is a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2020 Great Outdoors Colorado Resilient Communities Program grant application in partnership with Beyond Home. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Resolutions R-20-075 through R-20-077 be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Ms. Miller being an excused absence. Next, we have, we have three resolutions tonight. First is a resolution authorizing a seventh extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis. Rachel, are you handling this?
I am.
Very good.
Following review of the current public health crisis, the city manager is requesting council's approval to extend the emergency declaration from its current expiration date of September 30, 2020, through November 30, 2020. This request would extend the emergency declaration, mirroring similar action taken by neighboring municipalities. It also provides the city manager with the flexibility to continue to address a rapidly changing situation on a local level. Since the last requested extension was approved on July 20th, local public health authorities have continued to identify additional cases of COVID-19 within the Denver metro area and throughout Colorado, although the percentage of positive cases are returning to the lows seen in early June. There's another metric that tells us there's still work to be done in mitigating COVID-19. We are seeing highs in our two-week cumulative incidence rates as well, which has also informed the decision to request an extension of the emergency declaration. As always, the city manager has and will continue to record any use of the powers authorized under Section 26-38 of the Arvada City Code. City council will be regularly informed of all such action as soon as practical under the circumstances. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve R-20-078, a resolution authorizing a seventh extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis.
Very good. Open up for council questions or action. Mr. Jones, your lights on first.
If there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Just one clarification. Does the motion need to have the end date, or is it just all encapsulated in the resolution?
The resolution has all the appropriate dates. So if you vote to approve the resolution, that resolution will have the date contained within it.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I move that R-20-078, a resolution authorizing a seventh extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating, relating to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and the associated public health crisis, be approved.
I'm going to be supporting this motion. I want to commend Mr. Devon. He's kept council fully informed this whole time in terms of any action he has taken. It's not like we at council have sort of acquiesced and given away our input and, and to him on things. And we've certainly conducted business, I think, pretty much as usual, but this certainly gives him the ability to act on certain matters as he needs to. With that, that motion passes six to zero, Ms. Miller being an excused absence. Next, we have a resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement between the City of Arvada, Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and the Arvada Fire Protection District. Ms. Morris, you're handling this one as well?
Hey, I'm, Your Honor. City council action is requested on this resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement between the City of Arvada, the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and the Arvada Fire Protection District related to the allocation of tax increment financing. In order to reduce the potential adverse impact that the allocation of tax increment financing may have on AFPD's continuing ability to provide services to the city, the agreement allocates in advance certain portions of tax increment financing based on AFPD's mil levy. Specifically, as part of the agreement, the city, ORA, and AFP, AFPD agree that AFPD will receive all TIF funds generated by a voter-approved increase in AFPD's mil levy, which occurs after the approval or modification of an urban renewal plan, 100% of the TIF funds attributable to AFPD's mil levy, if a new urban renewal plan is created for all or part of the area included within the existing Ralston Fields urban renewal area, or the existing plan is substantially modified, and 50% of the TIF funds attributable to AFPD's mil levy if a new urban renewal plan is created for all or part of the area included within the existing Old Town Station urban renewal area, or the existing plan is substantially modified. In addition, AFPD agrees to the allocation of 100% of the TIF funds for redevelopment for any other new or substantially modified urban renewal areas unless the new or substantially modified plan would create a disproportionately increased call volume, service demand, and/or capital facility need for AFPD, in which case the parties would confer in good faith about how to allocate TIF funds. If the city, ORA, and AFPD did not reach this agreement now, they would need to confer and reach an agreement at the time of any new urban renewal plan or substantial modification of an existing urban renewal plan. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve R-20-079, a resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement between the City of Arvada, Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and the Arvada Fire Protection District.
Open it up for council questions or action. Ms. Ford?
I'll make a motion if there are no questions.
I see no other questions.
I move that R-20-079, a resolution authorizing a cooperative agreement between City of Arvada, Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and Arvada Fire Protection District be approved.
Motion's for approval. And let me speak to this as well, as the urban renewal representative to that board. It's been a long discussion between the Urban Renewal District and the Fire District, and this was really well reasoned and well worked out between both of those boards and frankly, their respective attorneys. So it was, it came to fruition well, and I think it really meets the needs of the Fire Protection District while still giving the Urban Renewal Authority the necessary tools it needs in its toolbox. So if you'll vote. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Ms. Miller being an excused absence. Finally, we have a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority to complete landscaping improvements on Ralston Road, Yukon Street to Garrison Street. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I believe we had informed you previously, there had been a verbal agreement reached between the city and the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority to provide $3.5 million of funding for the final design and construction of streetscape improvements for the Ralston Road Phase II project. That's the project that will be funded by the bonds. Previously, there had not been enough funding to provide streetscape improvements. That was something that was a source of concern to the council and to members of the community. So we looked for solutions in order to provide for streetscape improvements, and Urban Renewal expressed an interest in funding those improvements. One of our project engineers and one of our landscape design teammates presented a proposal to the Urban Renewal Authority. The Urban Renewal Authority favorably reviewed it, and we determined that we needed to develop this intergovernmental agreement in order to formalize the commitment made by ORA to the project. The urban renewal, the agreement before you will enable that to occur. Your approval will enable a contribution of $1,750,000 to be paid to the city on or before December 1st, and then a subsequent payment of the same amount to be paid by on or before December 1st, 2021. The improvements will include pedestrian lighting, colored concrete, trees, grates, irrigation, neighborhood markers and corner treatments, and street furniture, and also provide some enhancements to Wolf Park. We believe this is a win-win project for both the city and ORA. It enhances connectivity between Old Town and the area towards Garrison Street, which are other parts of the urban renewal area. And so therefore, we're recommending approval of Resolution R-20-080.
Very good. Open up for city council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer?
If there's not any questions, I'll make the motion.
You got to the button before Mr. Marriott.
Oh, all right. Hold on. I move that Resolution 20-080, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority to complete landscape improvements on Ralston Road to Yukon Street to Garrison Street, City Project Number 18-ST-40 be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes unanimously with Ms. Miller being an excused absence. Okay, we're now going to move on to, since, and it's not just because Ms. Miller's not here, and her readings of, first readings on ordinances is always entertaining, but just so happened that we didn't have any first readings tonight. So we'll move on to public hearings. I'll open the public hearing on the community comments on the application process for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant, 2021 Annual Action Plan, and 2021 Human Services Funding Pool. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a public hearing wherein you're, you're asked to open the public hearing and receive comments prior to the process that will be undertaken by the Human Services Advisory Committee to review the applications for expenditures of approximately $470,000 in community development block grant funds and $260,000 of the Human Services Funding Pool. So this provides an opportunity for members of the community, perhaps those that are connected with some of the potential applicants, to be able to provide you with their comments as they get ready to submit their applications. So I'm understanding that we have one or two people that may make comments on this, and certainly this would be the time to do it.
Passing out some materials that were provided to us with regard to this. I'll call upon Rachel Capra. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor, members of city council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come in front of you again. Lot has changed since last year when I was here in front of you, as has changed for all of us. 2020 has been a year of flexibility and adjustability for care and clinic, but our mission has not changed. We still service the kids in our community. We're still providing high-quality health care, and we appreciate so much, probably more than ever, the opportunity to apply for this funding, as we did see a major hit to our Medicaid revenue specifically there for a while, and we did have a couple grants who said they could not fund us. So we scrambled. We did qualify for a PPP loan. We did get some, the Jeffco Hope Fund from the Community First Foundation. We applied for CARES funding. So we have scrambled and put together funding. We're not in a dire situation, but it does make us just really appreciative of the city and their continuing support or consideration, at least, of our application again this year. And I did want to share a piece of exciting news for us. We did just receive a grant from the Colorado Health Foundation. We just found out last week. When COVID hit, our mental health provider, who we've been collaborating with through Jefferson Center for Mental Health, she went virtual and has been working from home. So we turned her office into a sick isolation room for possible COVID cases, and it's been really nice to have that designated room. Then we can bring all the babies for their immunizations into the back rooms, and they never have to go into a room where a really sick kid has been, even though we clean really well and everything. So now she wants to come back on site, and we want our mental health person back, but we really want to keep that sick isolation room. So the Colorado Health Foundation approved a grant. We're going to start construction in a couple weeks and build another exam room so we can bring her back on site and then also keep our sick isolation room, and we're going to have a zero-pressure venting system and really make it legit. So it'll be really nice. So that's something we're really excited about, that will just enhance the care that we're able to provide the community. So thank you for this opportunity. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all the great work you continue to do for us. Daniel Mondregan?
Good evening again, Daniel Mondregan. I have the pleasure of serving Hands of the Carpenter as its Resource Development Director. I am so grateful, first of all, for funding that we have received in the past. It has been a wonderful support to the work that we are striving to do in the community, and grateful for the opportunity this year to apply again. I can say in terms of the financials this year, ditto. Because of COVID, it has definitely been a challenge and did make us do some scrambling to be able to bring in financial support from the foundation community. So grateful, the new COVID funding from various sources that was available, and our individual donors did a wonderful job of stepping up and helping us. Hands of the Carpenter has been around since 2003. We help single women in need across Jefferson County with their cars. If they got a car that doesn't work, we fix it. If they don't have a car, or they come in with a car that needs to be put out of its misery, we bring in donated cars so that we can fix those cars, make sure they're going to be safe and reliable, and get them to the ladies needing them. The ladies pay 35% for, of what they would pay elsewhere, for services for repairs or for cars. They, they have that opportunity to have that value of the asset, the tool that is given to them or we help them with. When we first started, it was, we're going to help them. We're going to work with community shops, which we still do. So we have 17 shops up and down Jefferson County that help us out. We have our own shop on South Golden Road. You are welcome to come and visit, where we do the bulk of the repairs now, the initial repairs. And then after the initial repair, or after they have a car, then we'll either serve them at our place or with, through one of our partners. We also play nice with a lot of governmental agencies, with community agencies, nonprofits. We were just having a conversation beforehand. We may establish a relationship with their clients so that we can help moms that, that go to them, that send them our way. So we are just grateful for the opportunity to be of service to Jefferson County. I did leave a brochure with Mark, and you all have them. That one is particular about car donations and sponsorship of cars. So if you have a car that you're done with, or Mark, you want to, you know, send yours over our way, we'll take it and check it out. When we get a car in, we'll either get rid of it because it's over the hill, or we can use it, fix it up, make sure it's going to be safe. Or if it is a higher-end vehicle, we will be good sitters. We can sell cars. We have a dealer's license, and so we can get a few thousand dollars for, what do we got out here, an Audi, I think there's, so anyways, we can get some, so we can get some nice, a few thousand dollars to help several women. I look forward to continue to be, report back about how we support women who do live in Arvada and up and down Jefferson County. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Daniel. Kristen Rush, do we have other people signed up?
Yes, we do. Bruce?
Yes, we have Vicki Reyer and her coworker Marissa. They're on Zoom. They should be able to turn on now and talk to you.
Hello, Mayor and city council. Thank you so much. We had actually planned to be with you in real flesh today, but I've ended up with a pretty substantial head cold, and so I decided to spare all of you and join you by Zoom. And again, it's honored to be with you and get to speak about Beyond Home. So I'm going to do a little intro piece, which I'm going to read, and then Marissa, who is our new youth coordinator, full of energy, is going to let you know exactly what our grant request for the Human Services CDBG grant money will go to. So I serve as the president of Beyond Home, formerly known as Colorado Homeless Families. Colorado Homeless Families actually began in 1988, and it started out with just six HUD homes during an economic downturn when people were finding themselves homeless. Currently, Beyond Home, formerly Colorado Homeless Family, owns 40 debt-free transitional housing units, and our program works because our people work. housing units, and our program works because our people work. In 2016, Karen Allen took over as our executive director and expanded the services that prepare people for self-sufficiency for life through private, trauma-informed therapy for our parents and the children. In addition, every adult in the program is required to complete courses in life skills, parenting, healthy relationships, financial literacy, and more. In 2020, we rebranded to the new name Beyond Home to better reflect actually what we do, because it's all about progress. We've come to realize that housing is just the beginning. The possibilities that come with a safe, stable home, combined with a holistic, supportive service, that results in a lifetime, a career that leads to a livable wage for these households, they become self-sufficient for life. Beyond Home continues to assist working families who are experiencing homelessness or are on the verge of becoming homeless by assisting them through social, emotional, relational life skills and lifelong sufficiency. Together with our community partners, Beyond Home has housed 543 families, and 444, six of those families have graduated from our program and no longer require any government assistance. In 2020, Beyond Home also merged with an organization known as Women With a Cause. It's a nonprofit partner that continues to lift women out of poverty, and it helps these single moms find a career through education and training. We are actually breaking the cycle of poverty. And the reason I wanted to come, and thank you so much for offering this grant opportunity, is to remind you that we have been in Arvada. This organization has been in Arvada for over 30 years, addressing issues of homelessness and the unhoused, and the legacy is also yours to share, because Arvada, the City of Arvada, has been an amazing partner with us through the course of that 30 years, and we are very grateful. So Marissa, it's up to you.
Thank you, Vicki, and thank you, Mayor and the City Council. I'm so honored to be able to comment on this subject. We have worked really, really hard over the last four months that I've worked at Beyond Home to provide education and mental health resources for the, just a little bit over 100 kids that are housed at Beyond Home. And since I've only been there for four months, and I worked at a church before, I had no idea where to start with the programming, since no one had been in my position before. So I've been thinking about mental health and education. Over the summer, we had 34 of our kids actively participating in our summer learning program that was put on by an online program called iXL. We had 48% of those kids at or below grade level at the beginning of the summer, and by the end of the summer, we had 85% of our children at or above grade level. So that's about, out of the, I can't even do math right now. I'm so sorry. Been a long day. I'm sure a lot of us can relate. But we have been so, yeah, just cautious with how we put on our programming, and so, you know, that's masks and hand sanitizer and such, but especially with the mental health. I've just seen that be a very important topic to discuss with this generation, and especially for the generations to come. I believe that if this generation can overcome and address mental health, then the next generation will be better off. And so through our services, we're hoping to add and talk through mental health issues. So that means classes, discussion groups, book clubs if needed, outdoor activities to get the kids outside and together, as well as bringing in counselors and other mental health specialists. And then with education, we're hoping to bring new ideas to Beyond Home specifically, but we're hoping that our impact impacts the rest of the community of Arvada. So thank you so much for allowing us to speak on this subject, and we look forward to continuing to better the community through Beyond Home. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and as with the others, great programs, and I had great pleasure in the ribbon cutting for the improved basketball courts there with the Nuggets, and that was a great, great event, so. And it's a great facility. Do we have any others? Okay, that completes it. Let me talk a little bit about the process. What happens is, we as a City Council are dedicated to being able to review these applications and these grant requests in a non-political fashion, and we've done it for years through our Human Services Advisory Committee. And they have developed great matrices that they use to evaluate. All seven of us, when we're all here, all have our favorite local charities that we believe in and that we support, and that are sort of our favorites. And so by using the Human Services Advisory Committee, we're getting very impartial and very thorough examination of all these grant applications. Unfortunately, we will get more applications requesting more money than we're able to give out under our program. But our folks do the very best they can. Once they make their recommendations, it will come back to City Council for final approval, and I can't think of a time where we have not approved unanimously the recommendations of the Human Services Advisory Committee. So that'll be the process, and that'll come forward to us down the road at some point shortly. With that, I'll close the public hearing for the community comments, and we'll move back to regular public comment. And I understand we've got at least one individual signed up. I think we've got Katie Winter, who I'm guessing must have thought she couldn't confine her comments to three minutes, so that's why she wanted five. Those of us who know Katie well would...
Your Honor, you are 100% correct. In fact, it's documented on emails between Bruce and I, and thank you, Bruce, for your assistance. So good evening, Council, and thanks for the chance to have the opportunity to talk to you remotely from Team Winter Home here in West Arvada. I wanted to speak with you about the second round of CARES Act funding announced by the City of Arvada today, putting $1.5 million in grants out to our community, making your total investment of $4.3 million. You've bestowed the authority to Mark Devon to guide and make these investments in the places you believe are going to yield the highest return, and the data will show you that the first round of investments were distributed in all corners of Arvada, especially Old Town and our Wadsworth Corridor. But I'm sure in the interest of transparency and accountability that the City of Arvada is well-known for, you're going to share with the community exactly where the city's COVID dollars were spent, how they were invested in the community, and showing actual tangible results and making the most impact where it counts, right here in Arvada. But I got to tell you, I really feel like we've missed an opportunity, and it wouldn't be right for me to stay silent when we can talk about the work that's still yet to be done when investing in our home-based businesses and childcare and remote learning support for our youngest citizens and their families throughout our community. There are over 3,000 businesses in Arvada. There are 1,000 home-based businesses in Arvada. I'm a home-based business. I never thought I would be a home-based business, and I dream of the day I can hang a shingle outside of an actual storefront, just like my father and his father before him, and my grandfather as well. I work from home, and when I work from home, I try to invest in the talent right here in Jefferson County, and especially my Arvada friends and neighbors. I had $0.00 in business from March to July. It just wasn't happening for a couple of reasons. Mostly because everything dried up, but also because I would play in the dual role of remote learning teacher and childcare supporter. I stink at it. I'm terrible at it. I'm not designed to be a teacher. That's not what I do. But when I see that our City of Arvada misses the opportunity to invest CARES Act dollars in this area of childcare, I think there is an opportunity for us to really look at that. But also the thing that I'm really interested in is speaking about being a home-based business. I only wish a portion of the attention to home-based businesses could be given that was given to restaurants and other entities that have brick-and-mortar stores. Now, don't get me wrong, I love to eat. Lot One, Brewgrass, Tap and Dough, Jersey Mike's, Los Patrancas, Red Silo, Hunter Bay. I am all for supporting our Arvada businesses, and I've got the weight put on to show it. But I really think that we need to have some conversations about our home-based businesses and what they do when they can impact our community. What I've heard from conversations in our Arvada community, I've been putting together small groups of parents to have conversations, and my networking groups with the Arvada Chamber of Commerce, that there is definitely a need to help first-time, small businesses, those under 10 employees or less, apply for all these grants. If you don't have an accountant or a lawyer on staff or a department to help you do those financial modeling or forecasting, it can get overwhelming really quickly. They are at a disadvantage because they're a solopreneur, or someone who's deciding between taking the time away from their business to fill out an application, or working on their business to apply for these grants. They could show losses, they just need help. We are, in home-based businesses, the minority within the majority of large-scale business in Arvada. We're the ones that are scattered throughout the community. You don't know we exist. We don't have a brick-and-mortar store, but we're just as important to the fabric of a diverse Arvada, and keeping us alive is worth the investment of CARES Act funding of which you're allocated. So in closing, I really hope that the City Council will thoughtfully reexamine your position on extending an extra hint of support for all business owners, home-based businesses, and allowing them to be eligible to apply for CARES Act funding, and thinking about the childcare needs of a community. I'm just hearing reports today that Arvada West High School has a case of COVID, Drake Elementary School, and other schools as well, and it's going to be really interesting for us to look at those areas of investment. As always, I enjoy the opportunity to talk with you. You know how to find me, and I know how to find you, and I would love to have a follow-up conversation on how we can really aim big, aim high, and deliver for all of Arvada. So thank you so much tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Winter. And I'm sure someone will be getting back to you. With that, is there anybody else signed up for public comment? Very good. Any comments from City Council members? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a comment to make tonight. I want to do something here that's more on the national scale than our local scale, and note the passing this week of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I'm old enough to remember before the first woman had ever been appointed to the Supreme Court, and Justice Ginsburg was the second woman ever appointed to the Supreme Court. She served for 27 years on our Supreme Court, and was noted and known for her powerfully-written dissents in her time on the court. I think the thing that I'll remember mostly about Justice Ginsburg, however, was her ability to disagree without being disagreeable, something I think we do very well in the City of Arvada and mostly at local government, but something I think our state and federal governments could definitely take a lesson from. While it's sad from her passing, I think we need to celebrate the fact that we had her for the length of time we did, celebrate her public service. Quite a noble thing for someone like her to have done, and I know I will look back fondly with her time on the court and remember what a great time it has been for all of us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments from Council? I, obviously with her passing, it's going to make for some interesting times ahead, but you do have to applaud her work both before she got to the Supreme Court and then once she was on the Supreme Court. Her work for particularly minority rights and women's rights is second to none, and so certainly acknowledge that, and thank you, Mr. Marriott, for bringing that up tonight. And I take great pride that my law school class, which had some guy by the name of Bill Ritter as a classmate of mine, we were the first class that had as many women in our class as we did men, which was, and that was 1981 was our graduating class, so it's good to see. Now I think there's probably more female attorneys coming out than male attorneys, so the system's getting better all the time, and I'm very pleased with the fact that we have a woman city attorney. And with that, Mr. Devon, do you have anything before our city attorney has any comments?
Well, I would like to also add that I'm very pleased that we have a woman city attorney as well.
Much better than that last guy we had.
Absolutely. So what I, Council, what I did want to remind you is that next Monday we'll have a workshop. We will give you a bond project update, and we will also provide you with the first, actually second budget workshop, where we will present details on the proposed 21-22 budget and updated 10-year financial plan. We will be focusing on the organizational and service effectiveness and community economic, community economic development and safe community work systems, proposed budget for those three work systems. And then we'll also provide you with a discussion of moving forward in the recovery phase of our work, the work we do in our organization, our recovery person, lead person, Linda Haley, who will be presenting that workshop.
Very good.
Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Thank you for all the kind comments. I really appreciate it. I also did want to point out, it's, I think it's a really amazing thing that Council really looks at things in that, in that perspective. I know this is something we talked about in our office in terms of Justice Ginsburg's passing, and what she did for female attorneys and our potential career opportunities. I believe because of you and because of the faith that you put in me in this job, I am the first female city attorney for the City of Arvada. So there's something to be said for that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good. With that, we'll stand adjourned.